And everybody, thank you for joining us today for this small business bootcamp special session. I'm Robert Theobald. But the Small Business Ombudsman and Vice President of Small Business Services here at the Arizona Commerce Authority. We're glad to have you with us today. Now, we like to start these out by thanking all our community partners. We could not do these bootcamps and especially these special sessions without their time and their effort, their expertise. So for those not familiar with the Small Business Bootcamp, it is a webinar series designed to help small businesses return from the COVID crisis stronger than ever. It is a statewide initiative supported by community partners from across the state. And aside from the standard webinar days of Tuesday and Thursday mornings, we do occasional special sessions like today. It is also a resource collective and a content library. So with that, let's talk about the Resource Collective. The Resource Collective can be found on our bootcamp homepage. About the middle of the page, you'll find the link to the Resource Collective. And on the Resource Collective, you'll find additional tools and guides to help support small businesses with business guidance, business essentials, some marketing information, and other tools to help support your growth. Also, as I mentioned, we have a content library. In doing these bootcamp sessions since April of 2020, we record all the sessions and post them on our website. And with that, it's created a content library of close to 180 different webinars from expert presenters that you can access whenever you want with no cost. The recordings and the materials are posted in the archive section on our bootcamp website. And again, it's a great opportunity to revisit different topics or visit them for the first time. And we cover just about every business topic that a small business owner can benefit from. So it's a great resource and we encourage everybody to go look at those different sessions that are available to you. Also, the state has a couple of different websites that are very good to know about and visit often. The first is the state in general, the general information on COVID-19, information and resources at arizona-together.org. And then for business purposes, Arizona Commerce Authority set up the website, the COVID-19 Business Resource webpage at azcommerce.com/COVID-19. And that page includes business guidance, financial information, and other information that can help support all size businesses throughout the state. Also, the ACA has a number of programs to help support small businesses, our Small Business Services workforce, and our Arizona MDP, our Manufacturing Extension Partnership. And for those looking to start a new business or grow and expand their existing business, our Small Business Checklist can help entrepreneurs identify commonly requested licensing, registration, and compliance needs and information at the local, state, and federal levels. So with that, we'd like to turn to some updates. The first piece I want to mention is Small Business Saturday. Everybody knows about Black Friday and Cyber Monday, and that's all between those two is Small Business Saturday. This is supported by the National Chamber of Commerce and other organizations. And so we're going to post up a link in the chat of an article that shares how small businesses can take advantage of Small Business Saturday and get your information on some of those, some of that media that's available for that, for that day. So pretty cool program. Also, just want to remind everybody of PPP loan forgiveness. You do have to apply for forgiveness if you have a PPP loan. The EIDL, the Economic Injury Disaster Loan Program, has been expanded, is still available. It is also available on a separate EIDL program for those communities that have been impacted by the flooding that occurred this past summer in Arizona. And then a reminder of the Employee Retention Credit. There's, we've done a couple of webinars on that, you can go back and review. It's a great program with lots of potential funding available for your business. So with that, we'll take a quick look at some of the upcoming sessions. Tomorrow, we have a session on PPP loan forgiveness. So if you have questions about applying for forgiveness for your loan, please attend that session. Next week, we have the Top 10 Legal Mistakes for Small Businesses. We have a great presenter, Brian Burton from Snell &amp; Wilmore on that. He's been with us before, he does a great job. Then on Thursday, October 28th, this is a very new topic we haven't done yet. We encourage all to be there and it's your business on TikTok. Then following up with Tuesday, November 2nd, How to Handle Haters. We all know that during the holiday season, people get stressed. Sometimes they start becoming unpleasant or angry just because of the stress. And so we've got a great session on how to deal with those customers that are not having a good day. And then on November 4th, we have our 200th episode, our 200th webinar session. It's Veterans Business Programs. It's part of the SBA's National Veterans Small Business Week. So we're really excited about being part of the SBA's program with this bootcamp session. We invite everybody to attend. There's lots of great programs that you'll hear about and success stories. If you'll notice, it is an hour and a half instead of the standard hour, but it's going to be full of a lot of great information. If you're not a veteran, you can still attend. If you know a veteran, please forward this information to them. We want to make sure that they get it and can see the different programs they have to help support them as they start their own businesses. So with that, we're going to jump into today's session about the New Maricopa Small Business Resilience Program. We have Leanne Bond from the county, Maricopa County, Thomas Barr from Local First, and Amber and Mark from Prestamo CDFI. So with that, we're going to first turn the time over to Leanne and then to Thomas and then to Amber and Mark. So Leanne, I'm going to stop sharing my screen and the time is all yours.
Great, thank you, Robert. Hello, everyone. Good morning. I appreciate the opportunity to talk about Maricopa County's support for the small business community. As you may or may not know, Maricopa County has received funding from two different federal stimulus packages over the last 18 months or so. The first of those, the CARES Act Fund, we carved out a portion of that $400 million we received specifically to support small businesses. We developed a small business grant program and supported over 3,300 small businesses within the county, spent about $70 million on that program. And I'm proud of all that, but I'm also proud of how I think we learned how to listen to the small business community and adapt that program as we were running it. So we started that program as a maximum award of $10,000 per small business and quickly received feedback that that really wasn't a sufficient amount for a business that had been devastated by the COVID-19 pandemic. So we increased the threshold to $25,000. We also heard from newer businesses, particularly those that opened their doors in 2019, that they didn't have enough financial history to meet the qualifications for our program. So again, we modified and adjusted and created a program so those newer businesses could also access those stimulus funds. And so we wanted to work off of that successful model with our new American Rescue Plan Act or ARPA funds, but make the program even stronger. So we're rolling out with the help of Prestamo and Local First, a small business resilience program that's really taking a three-pronged approach at small business support. There will be a grant component. We're a couple of weeks off of getting that launched, so look for more information on that soon. But besides that, we'll be rolling out a small business loan program, offering low-cost loans to small businesses that are looking to expand. So I believe Amber and Mark are going to tell you more about that. And then we're also with the help of both Prestamo and Local First, launching a really robust technical assistance program. And so this will be individualized assistance. It will be classroom settings, virtual trainings, over a whole gamut of topics, including small business development, e-commerce, financial literacy, and a host of other topics as well. So I'm really excited about those two new components. I hope you all avail yourselves of these opportunities. If you have feedback on the program, please feel free to share it with our partners. Feel free to share it directly with Maricopa County. We are listening. Our Board of Supervisors wants to support the small business community and I appreciate your attendance today. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Thomas.
Great, thank you so much. We are so excited to be working with the county to provide assistance over the next many months to make sure that businesses have all the help they need as you're navigating the impacts of the pandemic and coming out of everything. And so today, we just wanted to share with you a little bit about who we are at Local First Arizona, how we can help you, and how you can get enrolled and submit your information to us so that we can get started and speak with you to learn more about your business and get you on track to have a plan to provide support to you. I just want to also name that we're great partners with Prestamo and Chicano's Porla Causa, who will be presenting right after us. And so we'll be talking fluidly, working together to make sure that we get you set up for success, whether you're working with us or working with them and the services they'll be providing as well. So my name's Thomas. I'm the Vice President over at Local First Arizona. We've been an organization for almost 20 years, providing resources to small businesses all throughout Arizona. We work with over 3,200 businesses that are members of our organization and we spread awareness about the importance of supporting small locally-owned businesses throughout our state. We're based in Phoenix, right in the county, and so we have an office downtown and will be available if any businesses would like to come in and meet with us in person. And we have a wide variety of resources that we'll be able to direct you to. For over the last 20 years, we've raised awareness about the importance of how much money stays in our local economy, our local economy when it's spent with small businesses. And so we bring a background of working with a variety of businesses and working with the public to make sure that they understand how important it is to support all of you as small businesses right here in our states. For years, we've worked with, like I mentioned, a variety of businesses. We're not just working with mom-and-pop restaurants and retailers, although if you are one, we can definitely help you too. Everything that's out there, there's a local business for it. And we've worked with a variety of those companies, whether you're in home and garden, grocery, a farm, a community kitchen, a gym, whatever it is. We know that there's local businesses out there and we've worked many, many years supporting you. So through the Maricopa County Program, we put together a really robust, thorough strategy to make sure that when you come to us and you request assistance, we're able to get you on track to receive whatever the top line, the really most important thing is to your company right now. We know that no two businesses are the same and all businesses have unique needs and come from different backgrounds, have been in business for different amounts of time, have different amounts of employees. And so what we're able to do is collect information from you and help you regardless of what that need is. So I've listed here a variety of different ways that we can help you. This is not an exhaustive list of everything that we can do to support you, but just to kind of give you an idea of some things you might think about that you might need some help with. These are things that we can start with for sure. Every time that we work with a business, we'll start with an exploratory call. We will sit down with you, get to know your business, try to understand what you're experiencing right now, and then start making a plan so that we can get you on track to receive support as soon as possible. This might look like a few months of work and this might look like getting a lot of work right away. It really just depends on where you're at as a company and what your greatest needs are right now. And so I wanted to just name just some of the unique programs that we have that you might be participating in when you come to Local First and give us your information. And I'll share the website where you can complete your information in the chat box. And I've also got it included on my final slide here that you can access. But one of the unique programs we have is called our Restaurant Bootcamp. If you're a small restaurant, food and beverage business, if you're a food truck, if you're a catering business, we've got this really unique bootcamp that we can put you through that is really catered in for the snitch market so that you can learn all the tools and resources that are necessary in order for you to access the newest information involved in the hospitality industry. So we go over everything from local sourcing to product pricing, inventory control, hiring new employees, all of these things that are essential to starting, growing, and expanding a food-based business. So this is an example of one program that we're offering if you're a food business out there. We have a couple of other really structured financial technical assistance programs as well that you might fit into after we receive your information. One is called Forza Local and the other is called We Rise Accelerator. These are both six-month programs that we have. The first Forza Local is if you are a business that primarily speaks Spanish and has Spanish-speaking employees and would like resources. The other is We Rise, which is for black-owned businesses. And so if you are interested in or have any of these cultural backgrounds, we may determine that these are great programs and great fits for you after we get your information. The other opportunity that we have is sustainability. If you're a business that's looking to reduce your energy or to market to people that are looking to support businesses that are being energy efficient or reducing your waste, we can look into your costs, into your spending as a business and reduce your costs for these types of things. And so we have a structured program called Scale Up that we might be able to enroll you into that can provide you information and training and customize it for your business. And then the last thing I'd mention here is that if you're a business that's in Wickenburg or Gila Bend, we consider those rural communities. You know, even though that they're still in Maricopa County, they're still smaller towns, smaller communities. So Local First Arizona also represents the Arizona Rural Development Council and we have a unique program called the Rural Business Academy, which is focuses on financial assistance, social media marketing, customer and client retention that we can work with you on to ensure that you have that very focused rural approach to your company as well. I just wanted to close by sharing just an example of a business we were able to help just in the last year so you can kind of have some context to how we can support you. This business is Cali's Cookies. We worked with them over the last year. Cali came to us. Her business was actually exploding through the pandemic. She had started a cookie company and was doing delivery services before COVID started. And as you could imagine, when the pandemic started and everyone was ordering things online and delivery, she had just an onslaught of business, but she didn't have a way to sustain the business. She didn't have a really good growth pattern. She was actually taking any order that came to her at any time, whether they needed something in six hours or in six days and any quantity. And so what we were able to do is come in and help her actually develop a strong weekly business plan and long-term business strategy so that she knew how to price point her cookies so that she could learn how to market her business to the right people for the right quantities and really get her structured so that she wasn't so busy that she couldn't handle all the orders that were coming in, but it was a sustainable way for her to grow the business long term. So that's just one example. But here's the website that I mentioned before. It's localfirstaz.com/maricopa-county. And I'll go ahead and drop it into the chat right now. And you can go here, you can fill out your information and you can let us know a little bit about your business and we will get in touch with you within two business days so that we can start supporting your company. And if you have any questions or need to reach out to somebody from our team, I'm available. This is my email right here, thomas@localfirstaz.com. You can also just go to localfirstaz.com if you can't find the link and you can, you can get in touch with us. So that's all that I have for you today. I want to hand it over now to our great partners, Amber over at Prestamo so that they can share about some of the work that they're doing as well. So thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Thomas. So this is, go back here. This is Mark and I. We work with Prestamo CDFI. We're a division of the nonprofit Chicano's Porla Causa and we're super, super excited to be participating in the Maricopa County Program alongside Local First. As Thomas mentioned, we're great partners. And I want to point out that you can use services from both Local First and Prestamo so you can maximize the amount of time and information that you're receiving to help your small business out of, into the recovery. I'm going to go over the three different areas that we're going to be supporting small businesses with and Mark will go into a little bit more detail about the loan portion and I'll talk about the technical assistance portion. But the county is actually covering a good portion of the interest and origination fees, which allows us to facilitate 1% growth loans up to $100,000. So they're 1% interest. There's no origination fees. They'll be up to five-year terms and they do require that your credit qualified. We will also be providing similar type services that Local First is providing at no cost so we can work with new business startups. We can help you with creating a business plan if you're in the infancy stages and need help with filing an LLC or getting your employer identification number or understanding what those requirements are. That's something that we can help walk you through and actually help you through that process. We also do skill building and fundamentals. So if you need help with financial basics, employee handbooks, understanding social media, we'll even work with you from the standpoint of helping you set up your account, create your first post, understanding schedules. So those basic fundamentals that you need in order to get your business online. And then we also help focus on growth strategies so we can help you with marketing plans and strategies, strategic plans, if you're looking to get a woman business entity or a minority business entity certification so that you could take advantage of government contracting or different types of contracting opportunities. Those are things that we can also help with as well. And then if you're interested in applying for any loans, grants, PPP forgiveness, anything that's out there, but you need assistance putting your application together, we can also provide you support with acquiring those documents and understanding how to go through the process and walk through the process with you. We'll also be doing a series of different webinars, skill-building sessions, trainings, and different networking opportunities so that you have the opportunity to meet other business owners and have conversations with other business owners and learn from one another. And then we'll hand it over to Mark if you want to talk about the growth loans.
Awesome, thank you so much, Amber. And let me just add also, you know, with the TA team and how crucial it is to sit down with them prior in a lot of cases when we're getting applications coming through and recognizing, you know, some of the applicants that aren't fully prepared and how their team can really help get you to that place before you're sitting down with, having an application being looked at with our underwriters. So, but again, going off of the requirement piece of it, really we want to focus on businesses within Maricopa County. Physical location, mobile or home-based businesses all need to fall within that Maricopa County region. So that's going to be one thing that we really need to understand about the program. Another fundamental, you know, thing to look at is the capability of repayment on a loan. So this is a 1% loan opportunity, but we're still actually looking at still the same underwriting requirements. So one of the huge things in one of those requirements when we're underwriting is the cash flow capability of businesses. Complete application requirements, including tax returns, financials, you know, all that good stuff. And we'll talk a little bit about that going to the next slide. But one also requirement that we're looking at too is understanding the spousal responsibility in a loan application and/or any ownership with 20 or more percent equity in a business and having them also be on board as part of that application. So we just really kind of, we really wanted to touch on these pieces so we can really, you know, preface this loan program and let people know and be transparent upfront about some of these basic fundamentals of that. We can move on to the next slide. And then going into the loan requirement piece of it, and I think, again, working in conjunction with our TA partners, you know, this is going to be also crucial to really, I think, making a smooth transition from application to approval to funding. But the document requirements, you know, very basic things, personal information, ID, credit reports on all business owners and their spouses, business information, EIN, address, industry. We're looking at also business plans and strategic plans or executive summaries, especially for new startup businesses. Your new startup business, this is something that's going to be very fundamental in that process and we're going to ask for upfront is a business plan. So again, with partnerships with Local First, with our TA team, you know, working through that process, you know, they can really help in helping our small businesses develop these plans. Two years' tax returns, personal and business is what we're looking for. Year-to-date financials, P and L and balance sheets. Again, these are very fundamental requests through the application process and we're going to get year-to-date, so from January through the current month, end of the current month is what we're going to be looking for on the P and L and balance sheets, personal financial statements as well. You know, having a good understanding of the personal financials is going to be crucial through this process. We have forms also that we'll be providing to all our applicants, whether it be electronic or a paper form, they'll get these along with a debt schedule. Something also to kind of put together as far as existing debt for businesses. Additional requirements, we're looking, we're going to be looking at bank account statements potentially. Again, personal and a and spousal guarantee through that. Now, one thing also that's important to understand is we're going to be utilizing normal underwriting guidelines. As a collateral, as a collateralized base lender, depending on the loan size, we're going to be looking for collateral. So one thing to keep in mind, collateral can be the new equipment that you're purchasing. If you're not purchasing equipment and you're looking at working capital as an example, you're asking for 50, $100,000, we're going to look to see what is available. And we're talking about tangible collateral, whether it be business assets or real estate. And typically, that's probably the most, the predominantly strongest type of collateral that we can use is the real estate, whether it be commercial or residential. Also, the credit component too is something that, you know, we're going to be looking at real closely and making sure that there aren't any collections, delinquent items on a credit report. But, so these are kind of some basic, again, I think, approaches to the application process and it gives you a good understanding of those initial pieces of documentation that we're going to be needing for this program.
Amber, thank you. So one of the, what are some of the ways that people could really utilize this growth loan to their advantage within their business?
So, you know, I think one of the biggest things right now, aside from the expansion piece of the business, but one of the biggest things is debt consolidation. So we're looking, and we're in an environment right now where there is a lot of challenges and struggles right now with businesses that, you know, feel, are they feeling the crunch of cash flow and being able to, you know, it's kind of like robbing Peter to pay Paul, if you will. This debt consolidation piece and utilizing right away this 1% program, you know, helps free up cash flow for businesses. So that's one, you know, huge benefit that I see that a lot of businesses that could potentially take advantage of.
Sure, yeah, they have credit card debt at 25% and refinance it into, or get working capital for a 1% interest rate would save a lot of interest.
And that's, you know, and understanding that piece of it, you know, one thing, again, looking at going forward and, you know, as a small business owner, you can think about, well, you know, I fit within that box. And this is something that I could take advantage. Knowing that piece, one of the things to get started is kind of going out there and figuring out, you know, what your priority is with regards to uses of funds and list it down because that's going to be huge. You know, we want to know exactly to what dollar you want, you're going to use those funds for. And so that's something to keep in mind also with that.
Yeah, we've seen a lot of people coming through with requests for capital. Yeah, we've seen a lot of people coming through with requests for capital because they've got a new contract. And they need to buy inventory, they might need to hire some new employees. So they can fulfill their contract, but they're not going to get paid for six, nine months on that contract. Because maybe it's with the government or maybe it's with a large corporation that has longer payment terms. So that's one, one opportunity as well, in addition to, like you said, the. If you have equipment that you need to purchase for your business or if you need to replace. Equipment or items or need to actually physically expand your business. Those are all, all options as well or just general working capital. One of the things that I think we've seen that I wanted to have you address as well. Is if businesses are struggling right now and they're looking to get a loan just to kind of keep their business afloat, could you talk a little bit about? Whether that would make sense for this type of loan?
Yeah, I'm so, and you're actually, I was kind of breaking up there. I repeat that for me.
Sorry. So if, if somebody is in a situation right now where they're struggling and they're having a difficult time making ends meet. It doesn't seem like this would be the right opportunity because it would be taking on additional debt that they would, might run into some troubles repaying. Is that correct?
Yeah, no, definitely. But, you know, also I think one of the other things to consider too. Is the flexibility in the underwriting guideline process, you know. We can't really focus too much on the, the requirements of the application process. So much as to the back end of it, when we're underwriting an application. Because we need, we understand that going into this process and coming out of twenty twenty, right? There are going to be some differences in, in the revenue from year over year. Understanding those differences and why and being able to underwrite a loan, taking that into consideration. Is, is crucial and we understand that piece too. So as opposed to regular, normal retail banking, underwriting guidelines through our retail banking partners. That we work closely with, you know, you know, some of the differences are that. You know, the credit component, you know, is, is looking at somebody with a credit score, you know, as low as six hundred. You know, as opposed to retail banking, you know, they won't do anything under six forty potentially. So those are also dead, what we call dead service coverage ratios as well. And again, these back, backend calculations that we do. If you're below one point two five on a, on a retail banking partnership. Application, they won't look at it. You know, we'll go down below that and we'll understand, again. Where the business is at, where they're heading and, and the potential to come out of this. This challenge that they're in, this cash flow challenge and to get them to a point. Where they're, you know, becoming, where they're seeing net, net positive gains month over month. And that's kind of the other thing also to look at, you know, in this program as opposed to. You know, just going in thinking, you know, where are the differences? What are the benefits? You know, so. And again, the, the one percent thing is definitely worthwhile. You know, to go through those processes and really kind of work closely with us and being able to try to identify the opportunities.
Thank you. That's great. Okay, so the business support program that we have is somewhat similar to what Thomas mentioned. We work with businesses at all stages, all different types of industries. And we can, you know, most of what we try to do is work directly one-on-one with the business. You get assigned to work with a business advisor that works with you. It can be in a particular subject matter area where they have expertise or you can work with a journalist. We can do things like have a brainstorming and strategy session where we talk about things like. You know, what kind of product lines should I bring into my business or how can I grow my product or services? Talk about your capacity within your organization, your small business, you might be a solopreneur and you're the only one that works for your business. So we can talk through and help you with some strategies on figuring out. Can you find some subcontractors that can help with specific tasks? Or are you ready to bring on a part-time employee or even a full-time employee? We can have conversations and create some strategy around that and help you get prepared for what that next step might look like. If you want to expand, maybe you want to expand your product lines, you want to expand the physical size of your space. You might want to expand into a second location or multiple locations. Those are all things. If you just want to talk to somebody about a new idea that you have that you're excited about and you want to get some feedback on whether it seems like a good idea. We can do some brainstorming and strategizing around that as well and actually help you put pen to paper. And start working on a plan and really looking through whether or not it's a profitable idea. And any kind of new ideas or strategies that you want to implement, those are all things that we can assist you with. We also focus on skill building sessions and workshops. Again, these can be in the form of webinars or in group training sessions. But we also really like to focus on that one-on-one interaction. Because like Thomas said, your business is unique and you have unique needs. And so a lot of times it's a lot better to work just directly one-on-one with you and give you the support and the guidance that your individual business needs. So that's really where we like to focus. We really want to help businesses have a strong foundation and understand management so that you can continue to grow your business. And meet what your definition of success is for your business. We can focus on things like helping you with time management skills, delegation. The, the types of things that you need to, you know, run the, the day-to-day operations of your business, but aren't necessarily things that. We think about when we think about business support. If you need assistance, understanding business financials or basic accounting, like how to put together a profit and loss statement. Those are things that we can sit down with you, we can take your bank statements and actually show you how to create. A profit and loss statement, we can help you get set up on QuickBooks and help train you on how to use QuickBooks or other types of accounting software. So we can work with you at that level as well. If you have human resources or workforce needs, we can help you understand. Regulations and laws around payroll and equal employer opportunities. If you need employee handbooks, we can help you create employee handbooks. If you need to get set up with payroll and understand your payroll tax liabilities. Those are all things that we can help with as well, in addition to connecting you with workforce opportunities. So if you're looking for employees, we have connections that we can help make in order to you potentially help you get, get staffed up. Leadership and management, so if you're struggling with particular areas or. You're, you're new to your business and you're new to management because you have new employees, so you're looking for some tips and guidance or. Just somebody to talk through some of the conflicts you might be having, those are things that we can talk with you about. Marketing and digital media strategies, including getting, getting found on Google, making sure that your Google profile is set up. That you're capitalizing on that, that your maps are set up correctly. So all of the grow with, grow with Google functions. That you need in order to make sure that you're getting found online. Social media as well, like I said earlier, we can help you actually set up your social media accounts, teach you how to post, help you understand. When you might want to use each type of social media platform for your type of business and also understanding your target market and how you want to market to them. Conflict resolution and if you need certifications for your business because you want to start taking advantage of. Government types of contracts and procurement, that's something that we can also help you with in the process as well. So. Really anything your business needs, we can have a conversation, we can put an actual plan together. Help guide you to the resources and really walk you through the process so that you can be successful. And you don't have to learn by trial and error. So that's one of the big things that I think is important is that, you know, we can support you really in any way. And as I mentioned earlier as well, if there's something about the local first program that you like and you want to utilize some of the local first programming. You can utilize the programming through local first and you can also utilize it through Prestamos as well. So you can get the business support from both programs and you can also get access to the, the growth loan. So there's no restrictions to using multiple programs. And as Mark also mentioned, we can help you through your application process. If you're interested in getting a loan, we can help you understand. The nitty gritty details of what you need to get together and what each thing means. A lot of people aren't used to applying for loans and they don't understand the loan process. And it can be complicated, so it's nice to have somebody that can really help walk you through and help you understand all the different elements. In terms of next steps, you can go online to www.growtobiz.org. And then we'll also put this in the chat as, as well. And there is an interest form where you can fill out some information about your business and you will immediately be prompted to set up a time with our intake team. Our client coordinator will ask you some basic information and really help you determine what needs. Whether it's getting assistance with the loan or you have a particular area or skill set that you're looking to try to get some support in. They'll go ahead and assess that and get you assigned to work with the business advisor immediately. So you can immediately set your appointment. If you don't set the appointment, you will get a follow-up email asking you to set your appointment because that's the next step in the intake process. So don't forget to actually set your appointment up. It can be as quick as a fifteen minute appointment. And we'll, we typically do hour-long sessions. We're super flexible with the times that we meet, we understand that your business owners and that you're working in your business a lot of times. So we have flexibility in the times that we can meet with you, whether it's evenings, weekends, daytime or lunch works better for you. And we can do it via Zoom call or phone call. We can meet in person, there's a lot of different opportunities. So we really focus on trying to remove any of the barriers that might make it difficult for you to access a program like this. By trying to be accommodating as possible and really flexible to your needs as a business owner. If you have questions, you can also give us a call. This is our Maricopa County resilience line. It should be active as of today and it will take you directly to the client coordinator as well. And then we also have a variety of webinars that we're going to be doing. You can take as many webinars as you want. You can go to our website at prestamosloans.org/events. You can also go to the growtobiz.org website and if you hit events on the top of that page, it'll also take you to the webinars. Throughout the next year, we will have a variety of different types of webinars that we're going to be doing. So it's something I recommend that you check back on. And then if you're working with a business advisor and they think that you might benefit from a particular webinar, they might recommend that. And then everything is, is recorded and you can watch it after the fact as well so that you don't have to watch it at the time if it's not convenient for you, but you can still get the information. I'll go through just very quickly the online interest form so that you can see what that looks like. We're going to ask questions like the name of your business, your employer identification number, the date your business started, your address. Because we do need to make sure that you're in Maricopa County for this particular program. The county is being very generous in covering all the costs so that you don't have to as the business owner. If for some reason you don't have an employer tax ID number, you can just put all zeros in there, you don't actually have to put. Your social security, we would prefer you don't do that. We're going to ask a couple of questions like for you to explain your goods and services that you provide or manufacture, how many employees you have. If you know it, your gross yearly income or revenue, so what you're bringing in in sales annually. And then what kind of impact could it have had on your operations? Because that really helps us understand where you're coming from. As part of your journey of where you're going and, and the growth that you're going to experience. We'll ask if you're interested in a loan, you don't have to do, you don't have to take a loan or be interested in a loan in order to get access to the business support. It's, you're, you're eligible for both, you could just choose to do one or the other. We'll ask if your business is currently profitable and if you can repay a loan through normal business income, if you do say you're interested in a loan. And then the amount of the loan that you're considering. The one percent interest is good for loans up to one hundred thousand dollars. If you do need more than a hundred thousand dollars of access to capital, that's something we can help with. The first one hundred thousand dollars would be about one percent and then anything after that would be at a different rate. So it could be a blended rate. To help lower the overall costs, but we do loans up to a couple million. So whatever your needs are, something we can help with. And as Mark mentioned, we're a mission-driven lender, so we focus on providing accessibility and equity in capital. So we do what we can to try to remove those barriers and make it possible for you to get access to capital. So we truly try to work and, and find a way to make it work as opposed to being rigid or have a particular box of set requirements. After you submit your interest form, you'll be directed to schedule, oh, I went backward. There we go. Okay, so timeframe expect, expectations. Mark, if you want to just talk about what somebody applies for a loan, what those expectations look like?
Yeah, definitely. So once, you know, once it, once you submit that interest form and it goes through the intake. Department, you know, and you schedule that appointment. One of the next things then at this point is a business advisor assisting you with all that application documentation. And once that's gathered. That's when we'll submit the application. Once an application is submitted, we're looking at getting a decision, again, a complete application with those docs within seventy-two hours. At that point, once we have an approval of a specific application. Then we'll, we'll issue a commitment letter. And this commitment letter has conditions as to the loan and everything stated, you know, within that loan and. Things that we'll need to get from the client, from the applicant. And once all those conditions are met, then we can set up for funding. Which typically takes anywhere from three to five business days on the funding process. But it, it is crucial to understand too during that commitment letter process and, and meeting those condition guidelines. And then again, we work closely with all our clients, you know, and some of the conditions, you know, are. The collateral component, for example, if we're using real estate, one of the things is, you know, initiating a title report, making sure there's clean. Clean titles, implementing and putting on a UCC lien. Getting information on liability coverage for the business. Things of that nature will kind of, you know, be on the conditions from the commitment letter that's received. So there is a, a step that we go through to make sure and ensure that the client is in, in. Full understanding of, of being committed to that loan process and before setting up final. Documentation and, and once the documents are signed and set up for funding. That's kind of, you know, what to expect through that process, you know, once we get a, a loan approved.
So it sounds like the most important piece is to collect the documentation and make sure you're getting the, the documentation as quickly as possible to help expedite the process.
Definitely. Yeah, I, I would say probably eighty percent of. The applications that come across or through that application process. The time is more on the ability of our, our clients getting that documentation back to us. And that's why it's important to really utilize, you know, the business consultants through that process too. And why we've implemented a process where the TA team is going to assist through that process. To really speed that up. We understand that small business owners are, are busy. You know, and, and any time out of their day, you know, to do something is time away from the business. You know, I experienced that in every application I do. But at the same time, you know, it's, again, it's being able to utilize the resources available. Communicating that and us really following up and staying on top of that process as best we can. To really make it a, a smooth transition, you know, for, for our small business owners.
That's great. I will go ahead. So here's our contact information. We'll also put it into the chat. I'm going to go ahead and stop share and then. There's, it looks like there's quite a few questions for us. Do you want to sit and ju- jump right in, Robert?
Yeah, Amber, you can just jump right into those questions. I know you know how to work it, so.
Answering a few.
Okay, so one of the questions was, can you share the website that Leanne was referring to? So if you want access to either the local first technical assistance program or the Prestamos program. You'll need to go to one of the, one of our websites or both of our websites to actually apply. So we can put that in the chat as well. It looks like Nisha is asking if you're a startup business, can you still have access to grants and loans? Yes, we do work with startup businesses. You will need to make sure that you do have a business plan and that you do have projections and assumptions. And that's something that our team can help you work with. We can work with the process of creating. An applicant, I'm sorry, the, the projections and really walking you through so you understand your different revenue streams and what expenditures you might have. And when you'll get to profitability as well as the different areas of the business plan. And I think Thomas as well, you guys definitely help with business plan creation and.
Yeah, absolutely.
And part of business plans is also creating the, the financial piece as well. Um, but either, either organization can help you with that.
And, and Nisha on that, the, as, as you work with either of them to develop that, that can help create those great goals for looking forward. Uh, for your business. So even though you may not have a business plan now, working with. Either organization to get that set up, uh, can be very helpful as you roll into twenty twenty-two.
Yep. Um, do you offer assistance in other counties? Um, we do at Prestamo's, we offer technical assistance in the same manner across the entire state under different types of programs. This particular program for the county is just for Maricopa County because they're, they're using their funding. Um, and then I know that local first, you also have different programs as well. Um, so if you want to reach out to either of our organization, organizations after the fact, I'm sure that we would be more than happy to help you with business assistance. And then we do lending across the state as well. It's not at the one percent that the Maricopa program has, but we'll work with you and try to get you into the best possible situation if it's a lending component.
Yeah, and then I'm going to throw in there, the Small Business Development Centers. Um, cover the entire state as well and they're in every county across the state and they can also help with technical assistance.
Um, there's a question, we're a tech startup without any equipment and without a lot of cash flow. I'm curious to know how this program can help startups like ours. Um, I would say that one of the what. On the technical assistance side, that either organization can really help you put a plan together and understand what you would need in order to get access to capital. Um, so it's really starts with trying to figure out, does this make sense? Does taking on debt make sense for my business? And then Mark, I don't know if you want to speak to the actual lending side.
No, that's a great question and, and you know, tha- and that's the. You know, it's kind of what comes first, the chicken or the egg thing, you know, and, and, and looking at and going back to how we underwrite and, and look at startup situations. Um, obviously, there's not, you know, a, a huge amount of revenue going to be coming in. You know, in, in those particular circumstances. So how do we underwrite something like that? Because ultimately, we want to know, does our small business owner have the ability to repay the loan? Where is that income coming from? So we utilize what we call a global debt service coverage ratio. So we're going to look at all opportunities of revenue, not just from the business coming in, but potentially. From individual uh, revenue sources from individual owners. A lot of times in the startup piece of it. Um, they're still, you know, working full-time jobs, these owners. So we'll utilize that income, you know, towards our ratios and, and use that as a means and opportunity for loan repayment. So that's one way that we look at it and that's one way I think we're, you know, we kind of see the flexibility and how we're going to underwrite. And how we normally underwrite a lot of these loans, you know, to begin with. But again, those are challenges that small business owners face all the time. You know, and again, when we look at some of the differences between our retail banking partners and how we underwrite. That's kind of, you know, falls in line to, to some of those differences. Um, a- and then the projection part of it. It's crucial that projections out two years minimum for a startup gives us a good opportunity of how well. The business has planned and what their experience is showing on those projections. So when we look at them, we're going to get a really good understanding on the viability of that revenue. And whether or not, you know, it, we see that it's feasible based off of that industry. So we'll look at that and we'll see, you know what, this, this is a great opportunity. We see the same thing that the small business owner sees. So at some point, again, there's some flexibility given and there could be exceptions made. To, you know, the ca- the cash flow requirement or that debt coverage requirement. So again, that goes back to, well, we don't necessarily need for you to make a dollar twenty-five for every dollar you spend. You know, so it could be a break-even, you know, situation, knowing that, you know, there's existing contracts that are there. That you can prove, you know, and, and those also add strength to an application. So it, it's uh, very case by case and your opportunities still exist in that process as well.
Thomas, are you able to work with nonprofit organizations as well?
Yeah, we can work with nonprofits, um, so it encourage um, any business that's uh, registered as a nonprofit. You can fill out the form on our site or just email us and we can, uh, we can get you some resources.
That's great. We also can work with nonprofits and we, this program will cover lending to nonprofits as well. It's a little bit different of an underwriting process, but uh, because there's no personal guarantee because nobody owns a nonprofit. Um, and it looks like there might be some problems with both of the links. Um, so we'll put those in the chat, there's a couple of comments around those.
Yeah, I, I think um, on ours, the M was capitalized on the original one, so just make sure when you go to the site that everything is lowercase.
Okay, and I'm going to put a different link in the chat, just in case there's a problem with the forward page. But the prestamosloans.org forward slash MC loans. You want to make sure that you're applying on our MC loans page as opposed to the apply now so that you can get access to the Maricopa program, just so you know. Um, there's a couple of questions around credit scores as well. I know that we're typically looking for six hundred plus credit score. That's not a hard and fast number, that's something that, you know, depending on the circumstances, we are potentially able to work with less than a six hundred score. If you, somebody asked a question as well about bankruptcy four plus years ago and. That shouldn't be a problem, what we really care about is what's happening currently, are there any delinquencies, collections? Are there any tax liens, any of those types of things? Um, so really, it's the more recent credit history that we're looking at, which is one of the reasons that, you know, one of the things that we do as a mission-driven lender. Again, is really try to find ways to make the loan work as opposed to look for reasons that it doesn't fit our underwriting guidelines. Um, there's a question around how's this different from Axium or what is now Dream Spring? Um, it's similar, they're a mission-driven lender as well. The advantage of this program through Maricopa County is that Maricopa County is covering. Uh, big bulk of the interest and they're covering the origination and the fees portion. So the only fee that you have for this loan is a one percent loan and. Um, I don't know that there's any other place that you would be able to get. Quite a, quite a great deal at the, the interest rate, even the idle loans from the government for emergency are at two point seven five for nonprofits. And three point seven five uh, for for-profit businesses. Um, so it is significantly decreased in the, in the interest rate. And as Mark mentioned, it can be a good opportunity for you to get working capital to pay off some higher interest debt that. Um, you might just be paying a ton of interest on, we just, you know, we're coming out of hopefully. This pandemic and a lot of people had to utilize personal and business credit cards to keep their business afloat. So this is definitely an, an opportunity to look at that as a, as a solution. Um, we you accept a lean canvas as a substitute for comprehensive business plan? I think we can use the lean canvas as a starting point, then there would be some supplementary um, conversations. So when you're looking at creating a business plan for lending, really the things that we're kind of looking at is what is your experience in this industry? What is your capacity to run your operations? Do you understand your target market? Do you understand your competitors? Um, and how are you actually operating? So that is just um, one of the, you know, various ways to, to kind of look at it. A lean con- canvas model doesn't really give that much detail. I'm trying to see if there's other. Type of questions, um, Darcy's asking, what's the name of the grant again? This program is called the Maricopa County Small Business Resilience Program. And Maricopa County is going to be doing quite a bit of different types of resilience programs. Some will be in housing, social services in the future. Um, this particular piece of it is for the technical assistance component, that local first and Prestamo's will be handling. And then those growth loans at the one percent interest rates under this particular program. I know that everybody's really interested in the grant piece of it and we're excited about that too. Um, however, the, the county still needs to vote on that. And that program needs to be implemented by the organizations that are going to be doing the growth loans, so, or I'm sorry, the. The grant piece of it, so it'll probably be quite a few weeks before that information comes out. Um, but I'm sure Robert will provide that information to everybody as well, once the grant piece is launched.
Excellent, I think that's a perfect uh, stopping point right here, right at time. Um, and yes, when, as soon as that information on the ground comes out, um, we will talk about it on the bootcamp. We will also have it posted on our um, financial resources page on the COVID nineteen business resources on our website. Um, so there'll be multiple methods that you'll be able to find out about that, that information. Um, and I'm sure there'll be some press releases and other things that will go out to, through different organizations. Uh, we want to thank uh, Mark and Amber and Thomas and the Anne for being on with us today and sharing this information for all of our Maricopa County businesses. Um, great information, excited to see how this program works going forward and works out for everybody. Um, a one percent loan uh, is a great deal. Um, inflation was five percent in the last year, so um, it's actually not making anybody money. Um, so it's a, it's a great deal for businesses that can get that one percent, so. Um, if, and I encourage everybody to look at that, if that's uh, in, in your plans for the future. Um, again, thank you uh, to Prestamo's and Local First for being on, they're great partners of ours uh, in many ways. And uh, we appreciate their time. And with that, we will go ahead and wrap up. We hope you can join us tomorrow for our PPP forgiveness session, a webinar, then nine AM. Um, we'll see you then, everybody have a great day today and uh, we'll talk to you soon. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, Thomas.
Bye.
Bye.